And welcome, so good to have you here just more participating in county governments. And I'd like to give a special welcome to elected officials, Sheriff Gary Gellidge, and District Attorney Dick Donovan, thank you for being here. Lieutenant Daniel, to bring forward the list of people wanting to speak, excuse me. And please turn off your phones, so that's not an interruption. It's a privilege and a pleasure to have Dr. Jean Morehouse, the pastor of Westside Christian Church with this morning to bring us our new cases, and a pledge of flag, standing ready.
This is my first time here, and I want to just introduce myself. I am Dr. Morehouse from the Westside Christian Church, and I found out that the person to blame for anything going wrong in our area is post-three, the burn. Then I found out that Dave has a relative that was a preacher in the Presbyterian church, right? I hope it rubbed off. Let's mouth the prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we ask for guidance for this group. Help them to know right from wrong. Help them to realize that the joy they have of serving comes from people willing to support and guide and direct, and a path that can be a blessing to our county, to our communities, and to the people that they represent. May they always know that the killing of innocent children is not proper. The idea of marriage for it to multiply and fill our cities and counties is not made by same-sex marriages. Help us to recognize right from wrong. Help us to do the right, be with them, strengthen them, and encourage them in the steps that they need to take, not to be politically correct, but to be God-fearing, men and women. To know that God is in control, and that someday we'll go to a place prepared either for the disobedient or for the obedient, because He is our friend. Jesus laid His life down for us. He gave all He could give for His creation. To die for your own is amazing. He made both the visible and the invisible, and we thank You for that wonderful gift, Father. We ask that Your guidance of Your Spirit will produce fruit. Help us to realize the gifts that we have and to use them for Your good. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, all God-people say it.
Amen.
Bless her, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Quick word, may you guide, be blessed, ladies too. May you be the wisdom among this group. And if you don't think so, protect my wife. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Morehouse, and I hope that cross goes on the legislature.
I hope so, too.
The March 48 work session minutes, along with the regular board meeting minutes, are available for your review. I'd like to also remind you that on the table in the back, there are the times to schedule for other meetings that you may want to attend. So just pick that up and take it with you. The positively Pauling segment today is about our senior center, and we have the director here, but we're going to take a look at this short video.
Hi, it's Betty Roach from the Pauling Senior Center, here to give you some updates on what's coming up for the next three months. First of all, in April, we have our AARP Tax Aid that's been going on since February. Their last day is going to be Monday, April the 10th, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. So if you haven't been to get your taxes done, it's a free service, so come on out if you can. The next thing, each month, the second Friday of each month, we have a dance. We call it our prime time dance. So in April, the second Friday, we're going to have South Paul Band, they're really good. They came, I think, in January, and everybody really loved them. So if you can, come out on Friday night, the second Friday in April, 7:30, it's $6 to get Amber and snack to share, we just have a blast. We dance, even if you can't dance, just kind of listen to the band, they're really good. Okay, going on to May, we have the AARP Driver Safety Class, so that's another good benefit that you can take advantage of. It's 9:30 in the morning to 4:00, and you need to bring your lunch. The cost is $15. If you're not a member, it's $20. On May 12th, we have our annual Mother's Day brunch. We do this for our mothers every year because we love our mothers and we want to honor them. So give us a call, sign up for this. It's a catered brunch, it's free to all of our mothers, we're going to have some special entertainment, so you really want to come to this, it's going to be fun. Okay, moving on to June, we have, of course, our Father's Day Lunch. We've got to celebrate our fathers. That's at 11:00 a.m., and that is no charge to fathers, and we usually have pizza and wings, so it's going to be a really good time. Okay, on June the 30th, we're going to have our Fourth of July Celebration. It's at 11:00 a.m., and we're going to have, of course, the varsity to cater that, which is always good, and also some more special entertainment. There's a charge of $3 per person, that's for everything, it's basically just paid for the entertainment. So you want to take advantage of that, that's a fun day also. We need your RSVP to take advantage of these events that's coming up, so give us a call at 770-443-8873. You can also reach us at our web address, pauling.gov, and under Departments, click on Senior Center. You can check us out on Facebook at Pauling Senior Center. Our physical address is 54 Industrial Way North, Dallas, 30132. Come see us soon.
And we're fortunate to have Ms. Betty Roach in the audience. Betty, if you would like to come up and if you have any personal comments or any questions from the board here or from the audience, either one, we entertain those questions. And she brought a young helper with her, so.
First of all, thank you all very much for spotlighting the senior center, and they sent a message to you all. They want you to come and exercise with them and see if you can keep up with them. That's what they told me to tell you guys, so that's a bet, you've got to try it out. But we have a lot of fun things at the senior center, it's all about seniors. We have other programs, we have Pauling Transit, which is provided by our Board of Commissioners for county residents, it's a free service, that's a wonderful thing for seniors that can't drive anymore, and other folks that just don't have a way to go anywhere. And we have our Pauling Nutrition Site, which is our meals-on-walls program, and our congregate folks come in and they have lunch every day, play games. So it's a, it's a hockin' place, we're doing something all the time. So did you have any questions?
I have, I do have a statement, I want people to know that Betty don't just work there, she balls and loves these people, and if they need something outside of there, she, she, she helps them with it, and she's incredible. I knew her when she was a walker, now she's a roach. Tell us one other thing, when is that thing coming? But I know this is not them, but.
Next year.
Next year. What happened this year?
Well, my brother-in-law passed away, and we're just kind of, you know.
Okay.
So we're going to take a year off.
All right, but I just want, she does a great job. My wife goes out there and line dances, and she got me out there one time.
Oh, that's it, one time.
I've been to some of the dances they have, but they did such a great job out there.
Thank you so much.
Betty, now what age does a senior start?
55.
You qualify, right?
We did have some, yeah, we did have some 50-year-olds, like I had a gentleman come in last week, and he's, he's just turned 50, and he's all excited to be a senior. But you'd be surprised at the people that don't know about the senior center in the county, because we have people, I would say, on a daily basis that come in and they say, "I've been here for years and I had no clue we had a senior center." So it's every day with somebody new coming, so y'all just tell them about us.
Betty, you have one more, do you have a dress code for the exercises? Because I've seen what Mr..
Yeah. No. Yeah, you've got to be dressed properly. Don't come in there in your usual.
Classical attire. Just to make it clear, the only ones that qualify up here are from Mr. Carmichael down the ladder.
Okay, yeah, not one that's straight.
Those guys are real lucky, if they're quiet, they'll make.
Young side here. Thanks, Betty.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I just want to kind of insert here something, not for anybody else, at least it's for me, just to review our mission, vision, and our values. The mission says, "With unity of purpose, work to enhance citizens' quality of life by maximizing resources to make Pauling County a better place to live, work, and play." The vision is, "The Pauling County Board of Commissioners will operate as an effective and efficient governing body on behalf of all the citizens of Pauling County to make Pauling County the preeminent place in the Atlanta metropolitan area to live, work, and play." And then you remember what the skipper helped us with on the values, it spells out heart, the H for harmony, the E for ethical and efficient, the A for accountability, the R for responsibility, and the T for teamwork and transparency. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Autism Awareness Month Proclamation, and I think maybe Mr. Taylor Duncan is here. Taylor, if you would come up and stand in front of the whole group.
Come up here, Taylor, you can come up here first, and then one more, Donald, we'll let you say a little something.
Ron's going to read the proclamation, and then I'll give you your copy, and you can say whatever you want.
Whereas autism, the fastest-growing development disability in the United States affecting more than 3 million people, is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response. And whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain, and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations, and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication. And whereas the efforts to address autism continue, doctors, therapists, and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges, and provide early, accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education, intervention, and therapy that are vital to future growth and development. And whereas ensuring that persons living with autism have access to the lifelong care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential. And whereas Pauling County is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness, Autism Awareness Month, and World Autism Awareness Day, in the hope that it will lead to better understanding of the disorder. Now therefore, be it resolved that David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, does hereby proclaim April 2017 as Autism Awareness Month, and April 2nd, 2017, as World Autism Awareness Day in Pauling County, to raise public awareness of autism and the myriad of issues surrounding autism, as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have been, that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families.
Did you go up there with him?
Oh, yes. Oh, go on. Oh, come on. You want mom in there? No, no, please. Finally, the noise goes up. Here's mom.
Thank you all for having me today for this proclamation. My name is Taylor Duncan, I'm 21-years-old, and I have autism. I'm also the Director/Commissioner of the Alternative Baseball Organization, Inc., a developmental baseball program for teens and adults with autism and special needs. The Center's for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC estimates that 1 in 68 children with, in the United States, have been diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. Over the next decade, over 500,000 teens will be transitioning into adulthood. Cutting to the chase, if you don't know someone with autism, you will soon. It is my calling to serve this community through our program, to provide acceptance, encouragement, and to help them gain the confidence they need to be able to fulfill their dreams in life. For more information, please visit www.taylorsduncan.com or www.alternativebaseball.org. Thank you all again, and God bless.
Thanks, Taylor.
The Pauling County Works of 911 Director has sent the improved model to announce Telecommunications Week with us. Thanks, Christine.
Taylor, you're going to be a tough act to follow, but I'm going to do my best. Good morning. David Dustin, his apologies for not being here with you guys today, he is handling some business up in the building. With that said, I'm excited to get to share the heart of our 911 center with all of you. Since 1991, this week, the second week of April, is designated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Although the idea actually started 10 years prior by a sheriff in California who wiped by accident. It's an interesting little story, if you want to look it up. Public safety telecommunicators are what we call communications officers. And this week, we set aside to honor those men and women who work behind the scenes ensuring the safety of our responders and citizens. When someone dials 911 for help, most have little knowledge of what actually takes place behind the scenes. The important thing is that when you call, the appropriate help is sent to your aid. But I'd like to take just a moment to elaborate and give you a peek into what our highly skilled communications officers do on a daily basis. Behind the convoys on the line are multiple systems being utilized simultaneously to ensure that your emergencies are processed as efficiently and accurately as possible. Information is being collected, verified, assessed, documented, and relayed to responders within a minute of answering your call. Life and death decisions have to be made, often with little to no information, and communications officers have to live with the outcome regardless of their own performance. While the call taker gathers additional information, the dispatcher is sending responders, providing call details, updates, directions, while handling requests and traffic from other contractors. They juggle multiple calls and units at once, keeping each one in mind, prioritizing and balancing to ensure everything is handled appropriately. They're responsible for learning multitudes of information and recalling it in an instant. They are scrutinized by the expectation of perfection, and although it's impossible to achieve, they continue to strive for it. And believe me, there's no one harder on them than themselves. They'll replay a call in their mind over and over again, picking it apart, to make sure that they did everything they could and find ways to do it even better next time. Your emergency is their emergency. Like our public safety counterparts, we may not run into dangerous situations, but we do leave our families ahead to work in severe weather and other major incidents. And even though we're not physically on the scene, we experience the adrenaline, the racing heart, the sweaty palms, all while sitting behind four monitors, radio, console, and phones. There are voices that they'll never forget, and secrets they can never tell, outcomes that will haunt them. The job requires dedication, and it can be unforgiving. It's challenging, and yet they rise to it. It's humbling, yet pride resonates, because our job makes a difference in the lives of many people. It takes a commitment, and I always try to convey to applicants how serious a decision becoming a communications officer is. It will change them, not just professionally, and it doesn't only affect them, but their loved ones, and they have to consider and consult with their loved ones in their decision to work at 911. During National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, we shouldn't forget about the families that support our communications officers while they work long hours, miss Christmases, anniversaries, birthdays. Like they say, it takes a village. Now, not many of us grew up saying that we wanted to be communications officers, but the job found us. It is a calling. I hope everyone finds a way to join us in honoring our communications officers and the job they do this week. Thank you Chairman Carmichael for sending the firehouse stuff yesterday and later this week, I greatly appreciate that. And thank you Commissioners for setting aside this time to recognize our employees. Thank you.
Do tell Betty we missed her. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the National Crime Victims' Rights Proclamation. Pauling County District Attorney Dick Donovan, and I've learned with my friendship with Dick that he never comes alone, he always gives his employees way more credit than he has, so I think half the audience you brought today, but. Thank you for being here, come on forward, and we'll give you this proclamation. That means y'all. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, and crime can catch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status, whereas providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment. Whereas victims who feel, victims who feel understood and supported are likely to disclose their victimization, seek services, and participate in the justice process. Whereas a multidisciplinary response involving collaboration among victim service professionals, criminal justice officials, legal professionals, medical and mental health providers, and community leaders is essential to reach and serve all victims, especially those who are marginalized, have disabilities, or live in remote locations. Whereas strengthening the multidisciplinary response, bringing diverse skills, perspectives, and understandings together in the service of victims, also serves to build the resilience of those responders by strengthening the confidence of their roles, abilities, and sense of contribution. Whereas National Crime Victims' Week, April 2nd through the 8th, 2017, provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenged to reach or serve, are afforded their rights and receive a trauma-informed response. And whereas the Pauling County District Attorney Office Victim Witness Unit is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and supervisors. Therefore, be it resolved that David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Week of April 2nd through the 8th, 2017, as Crime Victims' Rights Week, and affirm that Pauling County Board of Commissioners' commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response and assist all victims of crime during Crime Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime, so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you for being here, and we just honor you. Just let me, if I may, introduce these people. We've actually got two missing, and this is, this is not all of them. You want to introduce them? Okay. This is our victim witness coordinator, Jamie White, all of these people here work for her. This is Miriam Oliveras, this is Mitch Comer, this is Jennifer Pyatt, this is Janet Cox, Abby Floyd, Jenny Pies, Angie Parsons, Carol Hall, Mr. Eisner, Sean, and Nate Barber. We have seven victim witness advocates, we have volunteers, and we have part-timers, all of them contribute to that office. I do have some remarks once these people have all gone back.
That's our cue, huh?
Yeah.
I claim Jamie is one of mine, but Mitch is one of mine. Good to see you.
I try to make this a little different, so that those of you who've heard this before don't get bored, but it's basically the same thing. Chairman Carmichael, Commissioners, the skipper, this is Pollard. First, once again, let me thank the Pauling County Board of Commissioners for this recognition of Crime Victims' Rights Week, yeah, that is hard to say, especially repeatedly, which was last week during a spring break. As you know, crime victims' rights services are a most important function in the District Attorney's Office. We in the office, in the DA's office of Pauling, are dedicated to the rights and interests which are protected by the crime victims' little rights. Since 1974, when the Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act was enacted, there had been more than 32 specific acts passed by the Congress of the United States addressing crime victims' rights. And they include, but not limited to, 1982, the Victim Witness Protection Act, 1984, the Victims of Crimes Act, 1994, the Violence Against Women's Act. By the way, we have a separate unit for the Violence Against Women's in our office. In 1996, the Mandatory Victims Restitution Act, 2000, the Trafficking Victims Act, and probably most importantly, 2006, the Child Protection and Safety Act. Our office works to ensure victims and their families all the rights guaranteed by the crime victims' little rights. We have three full-time investigators, excuse me, four full-time investigators who are post-certified law enforcement officers. We have seven full-time victim witness advocates, along with six other part-time staff members, and I've introduced them all to you already. Each of these victim witness advocates are college-educated, they're specially trained and experienced in helping guide citizens through the aftermath of traumatic and life-changing crimes of which they have been victims. These members of the Victim Witness Unit also help in assessing compensation, and in some cases, the basic restructuring of a victim's life. These seven very hard-working and dedicated specialists make certain that our prosecution of the criminal is not the only way in which we serve the people of Pauling County and the Pauling judicial circuit. I've already introduced them for me and on behalf of my consistent district attorneys, whom these people assist, my administrative staff, investigators, and the victim witness staff, I thank you again for your recognition of a very important week in which we bring to the fore our goal of the circus camp. Thank you very much. What's going on there? Are we being excused?
You'll have to sing a song first.
You don't want me to do that because you want these people to stay here, right?
Just glad to have you here, as long as you can stay. Wonder if I have guests, I haven't seen Jason Tanner, have you snuck in on me, Jason? Jason Tanner oversees the administrative department, nursing department at Chattahoochee Technical College, is going to report on the success.
I'm going to be very brief, and I believe George has some excellent project. But on March 31st, we received one bid for this project, and they reviewed and agreed that it's a very good price.
Thank you, Taff. So we received one bid. It was within 87% of G-Tot average weighted price, so we feel it's a good bid. Unfortunately, prices have gone up significantly. Last fall, we let out a striking contract, and in that time period, the prices have gone up like 32%. Unfortunately, we're going to keep on seeing this trend as long as the road construction businesses will... Any questions?
That 32% is from last year?
It was from September of last year. About how many miles is that due? It is 9.3 miles, and it's on four roads. It is Pleasant Grove Road, McGarrett Road, Army Road, and Carson Thompson.
Under reports from committees and departments, we have none this morning. We did have Kathy Helms here, who'd like to speak on O.B.S.I.D. number two. Thank you, Kathy, for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you want to add hiring additional key personnel, I'd like to address a few things. First, you must be ever mindful of hiring or appointing people to help you obtain names or invest in interest in projects in Pauline County. Part of the reason we're where we are is the result of cronyism and favoritism by previous administrations. We have excellent qualified people working today. I would hope you exercise awareness regarding those positions while building the best team possible. Teams are an essential part of our lives, at work, at home, and within the community. We have here a five-member team that oversees and approves operations and expenditures in our county. Each member of the team is significant and plays an important role in the lives of Pauline County residents. We must be also inclusive of the role each department head plays, and those who work for them have in achieving the continued success in our community. They're also vital members of this team. The purpose of the team is to provide the framework that will increase productivity in planning, problem-solving, and decision-making. To be successful, teams must remain focused on their goal. There are defined stages of team development as described by Dr. Bruce Tuckerman, published in 1985. I won't go into detail about each stage, but hope you will explore the model to improve the overall productivity of not only this Board of Commissioners, but the entire operations of Pauline County. Every team goes through a phase referred to as storming. I believe that's where we are today. Disagreements about the way to approach problems are constant at this stage. Perhaps the goal has not been clearly defined, and may be different for each member. It's critical for the goal to be clear, defined, and may be different for each member. Without clarity, there can be no productivity, only disagreements. Leadership is an integral part of successful teams. Trust and integrity of the leader are paramount. Without it, the others, the members of the team, become uninterested in the goal and become more focused on behavior, creating what looks like chaos. It may be necessary for the leadership role to be switched from time to time. Quite frankly, we all assume a leadership role at some time in our lives. Despite them, the Board of Commissioners have some of the best people I've ever had the opportunity to meet. We have a first commissioner that is a professional in the IT field, one that is in real estate and property management, one that is proficient in the financial field, one that has expertise in the construction management field, and one that has spent most of his life in a governmental environment. I would say that's quite a diverse and complementary group of representatives of Pauline County citizens, decision-makers I trust and admire. There are indeed five of you, each with one vote. No vote is more or less important than the others. No one is anyone's boss. No one is more powerful than the other. Not one of you can tell the other what to do or what not to do. You are all equally responsible for the success of our community by empowering employees to do their jobs effectively. You can choose to be a team with strong leadership, trusted integrity, and necessary tools for building high-performance teams. Define your goals. Don't minimize anyone on this VOC or anyone that works or lives in Pauline County. Good leaders build people up. They don't tear them down. Even the appearance of cronyism can create an environment of hostility that's quite distant from the unity. It's been discussed at every meeting since the first year. I would never consider appointing nor hiring any member of my team without the majority being in agreement, specifically those that hold the same voting power as myself. I don't believe any successful team would. Be very careful in your selection of key members of your team. Thank you. I have here a handout. It's a model of stages of team development. Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, discuss action on four consent agenda items. Number one, approve the professional services agreement with Glenn Richardson of counsel to continue representing the Pauline County Tax Assessors Department, both presently pending in any future matters that may arise during the term of this agreement. Declare a surplus the ARFF crash apparatus and approve the item to be sold. Number three, authorize the chairman to execute the easement agreement and associated documents with Atlanta Gaslight to specifically identify an easement across a county-owned property located in Land Lot 229, Third District, Third Section in Pauline County, Georgia. And number four, declare items listed in surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. DOT Truck Number 111, a 1998 Ford L8000, number IFDYWA2AAKVA51916. And DOT Unit 159, roller, 1988 Ingersoll Land, 394P. If any of the commissioners would like to move any of the four items to the new business. Hearing done, we will move on to old business. Discuss action to adopt the job description for senior administrative assistants to the chairman through human resources to begin the hiring process. This agenda item was tabled from the March 28th, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting, and it's a position that is a new position as a result of separating the county clerk from the administrative assistant to the chairman. And we do have our human resources director here, Mr. Brian Acker, for any clarifications. Ms. Skipper has done some research, along with myself, about the ACCG stance and standardization of positions within any of the 159 counties. So I'm going to call on you, Skipper.
During the last meeting, the chairman asked me to contact ACCG and ask them what they would recommend in our situation. I did do that. I gave them a copy of the naval legislation to look at, and then asked the question about whether or not this position should be civil service, non-civil service, which is a department head, or some mixture of those. Both Kelly Priggin and Joe Schwerer responded, and what they indicated was that they did not believe our naval legislation had a category where you could mix the employees that the civil service rules that are in our naval legislation said. You either need to be a civil service employee, or you need to be a department head, that you cannot leave both civil service and appointed confirmed to go through that process that the department head does. What that would mean is that for this position, you would need to make a decision about whether or not it's going to be a civil service position, at which point they would go through HR for their normal employment practices, and I can kind of roll through that. Mr. Acker would advertise it. We would take applications. Those would be narrowed. Interviews would be completed. Background checks would be done, and then ultimately someone would be offered a position, pending their background check materials coming back without issue. Part two for a department head is similar, except we want someone who's selected... Well, it's narrow. The board commissioners would interview people, and then if a person selects, the background checks materials will still need to come back, but there would need to be a nomination and confirmation by this board of that person. They do not recommend, do not believe they have a category to mix those two, so that you have a civil service person that is nominated and confirmed. So it needs to be one or the other.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Acker nodded when I gave the brief rundown. What we do so well.
Any questions or discussion from the board members?
Discussion, in the backups that we received, which is the job description that was presented on March 28th, and that would need to be corrected where it talks about this position in non-civil service is directed by and serves as the chair.
That would need to be corrected. It'd need to be corrected on that one. And I don't know if Mr. Acker produced a different job description.
I guess basically the decision you have on that job description that we have there for you is we would strike that section of it if you choose for a civil service employee. If you choose for a department head, we would commercially advocate this department head that serves nomination, confirmation, board measures. That would be a pleasure.
Right, so it would be that essentially second sentence in here that says note, and has a colon. That's the sentence that would change depending on what the board's decision is.
Can we do that in form of a motion?
You would this afternoon. Feel free to keep discussing it, but yes.
Or you want to talk about it some more? I'm just pausing to see if there are any other thoughts. You spoke last time about the confirmation process.
Yeah, I'd like to do non-civil service and bring a nomination and confirmation to the board. I think that kind of fulfills everything that we've talked about, and some things that you and I have talked about it, you know, four years from now, you're not here. Does that make sense?
I don't think that's one of the options.
It is if you make the person a department head.
A department head, right. Right, you basically, I'm going to cut out, get right to it, you basically have, based on recommendations from ACCG, they say take two approaches, civil service or non-civil service, but that is a department head that is nominated and confirmed by the board.
So we're going to have an executive administrative, executive assistant, unlike any of the other executive assistants, but this one is confirmed by the board.
It would be a department head, essentially this person would be the head of their own department, is how I would view that in our structure itself.
There's nobody that works for this position. How can you justify calling this a department head when there's no department there?
There is no other position like that in the county. You'd have a department head that was a single person. How about a department stood across?
When you create the executive assistant clerk to the board of commissioners, that person would be a stand-alone department head. That's in the naval legislation. The naval legislation says that the county, well, the executive assistant to the board commissioners, the comptroller, and the county attorney, and any other department head must go through nomination and confirmation.
But that's very explicitly outlined by those positions.
Yes, it does, and we have to create a department within our system to do that, which is partly Ms. Pollard's issue as well, but...
And as we discussed, Ms. Acker, this would not be adding a person because it's two jobs, four jobs to go see.
As I understand it, VOC has two positions allocated beyond those positions. Has two positions allocated to it. We are using different job classifications for the county clerk and for this position, but the head county is still two. And if you were to have an additional position that were a third person, that would require additional funding allocation. That's how I understand, that's how we would deal with it within the department.
That's my understanding. So to summarize, you will summarize it?
Well, actually, I hate to ask this question, but if this position is made a department head, does this position have to have parity for salary with every other department head?
I think it would relative to the duties performed.
Okay. Sorry. I asked that for you, Taff.
Well, since you brought that up, Ms. Skipper, can you identify a number or give an estimate, how much more that would cost the budget?
I think, I don't recall off the top of my head. I probably have the job description in front of you, but I had a salary range on there, and I think that range is still consistent with what you would ask of this position.
High grade 14.
I think high grade 14. I don't recall the range, but I think that's consistent with the position and other comparable positions in the county.
The pay would be the same that we have on this, that we've been talking about because of the job duties.
And just again, for clerk case, and the reason you would do this rather than go with the normal hiring process, and interviews, and through the human resources department, would just be so that the board commissioners could confirm whoever the chairman's choice would be? Is that the underlying reason?
It's not an underlying for me, that's the reason, and it's, we do not have conversations about it, and I feel like it's okay for the chairman, whoever he or she is in that position, to choose somebody that they would like to work with, but I also think it's important to be confirmed. And that's kind of the conversation you and I've had, you know, if somebody else was here, and they'd be commenting, feel like they should be able to do something. And if that's the case, if it was any other way, that would be a little different, would be a little difficult to do.
Well, I've had this conversation also, so you're, with others, you're saying that after the term of a sitting chairman, then you're concerned about where that person would go?
If the conversation that we've had, if you think it's important for the chairperson to choose... to choose the person that they would like to work with, that would be hard for that to happen as a civil service position without that person being moved somewhere else to fulfill another job, civil service, and then the chairman be able to do what he or she would like to do by bringing their own in. And I basically think this is a, what we're recommending, or what I'm recommending, is probably a compromise to what you originally wanted to do, which was just to make the appointment.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Brian. Old business item number two, discuss action to adopt the job description for county administrator equivalent in a pretty human, in a pretty human resources to begin the hiring process. This was tabled originally for February 14th, 2017, board commissioners meeting, and again, March the 14th, 2017. Authorization was given to Human Resources Department Director Brian Acker to revise the job description and bring it back before the board. So, as you recall, first thing we did was ensure that the budget was sound, and we had available funds, available to hire this position, and I've used several different illustrations to describe the need for the position. Basically, a county that's the size of Pauline County with the population, with the budget that we have, and the, just the number of moving parts. I was lucky as a man in my twenties to have a 1961 Corvette convertible with eight cylinders in it. If it ever went clicking on all eight of them, I wanted something done. Our county administration department's clicking on about four cylinders, and there are so many needs and tasks that are reported in this county. I've also described before that the ability to get out and represent the Northwest Georgia Regional Conference, or the Atlanta Regional Conference, or the surrounding counties with just local civic organizations, and truly represent the people as a chairman is impossible if you're trying to do it, do it all. So the position is greatly needed, and I would appreciate the board commissioners supporting the need for this position. I think it will benefit our county, our entire county and the people of Pauline County. There have been actually four different job descriptions out there that you have for the backup reading, and so there are really four different choices that I'm willing to live with just to get this assistance. Any discussion or comments?
Well, I'll go ahead and comment. Appreciate you sending over the job descriptions to review. I've said from the beginning, I think that you do need some assistance in this office. The concerns that I had or met or are addressed with the description, the job description that you sent titled County Operations Manager. I'm willing to move forward with that one. I don't, I can't speak for anyone else on this board, but I can support County Operations Manager with the job description that you had sent. I guess it was late last week.
And I agree with Brian. We got that in the form of an email late on Saturday. Actually, I think three different positions, asking for one of the three, and I agree with someone I was talking about, but that was in the form of an email. I don't see that in our backup for the job description, probably because it was a fourth and you didn't need to add that to it.
The three that were, let me try and put send out, I have them right here in front of me. The county administrator, the county operations manager, a chief of staff position that's chief of some counties, and then finally just the government services position that Mr. Rannold was thrown in as a fourth consideration. Just re-look at that job description. Any comments, Brian?
Basically, as we followed up from the previous meeting, chairman and I discussed, hey, let's put several different options out there, present them to you. My understanding was you don't get copies of those job descriptions. It's trying to give some different options. They're more the way to skin a cat, and different approaches that do take different levels of responsibility, and so you have to take that into account relative to what it is you want from the position. But it's giving you several different options.
I think what you're asking is how do you pick one this afternoon? You would do a motion to, when you do the motion that goes with this agenda, and you need to indicate which description you're asking for, whoever makes the motion, whoever makes the second. So if you were to say county operations manager, that's one of the choices, chief of staff is one of the choices, you need administrator.
Administrator.
Or government services.
I'm most concerned with government services.
I think you just need to say which one of those descriptions that you are asking for.
And then we give a copy of the job description.
I've got all of them right here.
Yes, we can, I'm sure we can make more copies between now and then.
I'd rather you option, get a copy.
That's right.
We have copies of those over there.
There's no government services job description.
No, so you, there were actually just three then, right?
There's really three. Government services, you all worked on the board, I think, since we had that position filled, so that's one of the reasons why I presented to you, because you've known what that position was and how it was utilized.
So now they all have the description in front of them?
Right.
Well, I think what the, I think what the confusion was, was the email said on Saturday, said, it said, "I have attached info on four possible job descriptions," and there was actually three. And I didn't think that the flow chart down there was a job description, but there was actually only three, so I just wanted to clarify that we weren't missing one.
The flow charts actually highlighted in yellow, you know, where that position would sit in relation to the board commissioners and the department heads and the chairman. Any other questions, discussions, comments?
Brian, let me ask you. So Brian, on each of the job descriptions that you've got, your proposed pay grade, you feel good with each of those? Because there's a difference.
Again, relative to the duties, changing some of the scope of responsibility, authority, things of that nature.
Brian, the operations manager position, I have one question about the organization chart proposed with that. Shows the county operations manager, looks like it's in a position, supervisory position over all the other department heads, but the description says it's not. Is that there to indicate a form of day-to-day operations role, or does that, does this need to be updated and moved to another place in this chart?
The county operations manager does not have direct supervision or authority over those department heads, so if it's on there and it reflects, it's intended to be off to the side.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move to number three, which is discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign a transmittal letter submitting the Pauline County Joint Comprehensive Plan to the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission for Review. This was tabled from March the 28th of 2017 after the public hearing, and this litman is here to address. Let me just say before this litman speaks, I really think this is a good thing because what it describes, what it accounts for is the involvement of the citizens. Last Friday, the 7th, or, it was the 3rd. Last Thursday to the 6th, we actually had several citizens come in and have an additional kind of a personal roundtable and public hearing for those persons, those people that wanted a digital chance to speak with our community development department with their concerns and study and research. Those people were Ms. Kathy Hounds, Ms. Sue Wilkins, Mr. Roy Sparks, Ms. Joel Larkin, Ms. Nina San Filippo, and Ms. Carol McLeod. Some of them are here in the audience, and we appreciate that you've taken that extra couple hours last week to share your digital thoughts. As a result of their input, there has not been enough time at this Tuesday meeting to get out some revisionary language in the plan, in the document, and Ms. Litman and I talked yesterday evening and decided that, you know, since you all didn't have a chance to read and review, and we're against some of the citizens that had that level of interest, that we still have a little wiggle room, a little time in our necessity to get it done and get it approved. And we do have a call meeting next Friday where we might be able to bring it up. I think Ms. Skipper might need to weigh in on that. It's actually a water sewage advisory board and a joint gathering with the board commissioners.
Not if we didn't advertise it for that, and I'm looking at Ms. Meredith. I don't think we did.
Well, we still have the following Tuesday after, that's the 25th. But it is on the, on the old business agenda. We could not take it off, even though, you know, we're not ready to do the transmittal letter at this point. We couldn't take it off because it was tabled for this meeting specifically. Comments, and Ms. Litman, if you would?
I think if I read correctly, and you could get it taken care of, I think it's everybody tomorrow afternoon, but I would imagine by the end of the week.
Definitely. My goal is to have it, it's probably about 85% done. The problem is some maps need to be changed, and that's what's going to take more than allow us to get time to get that out to the public and to you guys today.
So you think you could have it done by the time the sun goes down on Friday to us and to the public, and start saying, we'll go do it tomorrow, and then we get pushed off?
Yeah.
That gives us time to, you know, till April 25th, that gives us plenty of time. Okay?
Other comments? We'll move into new business. Number one, discuss action to approve the lease agreement with Helping Hands of Pauline County Incorporated. Ms. Skipper.
And I think this is an item that all five of you in some form had talked to me about. Helping Hands leases the building where we used to have a building maintenance facility that's over on Spring Street, and they are hoping to be able to be eligible for some funding to do some improvements and other things out there, but they needed to have a lease that showed more long-term intent in it. You as a board are really only allowed to enter into leases that are for 12 months or end at the end of a calendar year, so that's a little bit difficult for us. So what I ended up drafting for this go-around was that it is still a 12-month lease, it has an automatic renewal. If you all intend to not renew, you have to get six months' notice. So to that end, that gives them some comfort for what they can do over there as opposed to the way things are ordinarily handled here. So I hope that that gives them the necessity for their standardization for an extra time while still complying with our rules.
Any comments?
I think it's good. Helping Hands has been around a long time. They do a lot for our community, and I thank them for it. And that's, I believe, we're doing what we can do, and it gives them the opportunity, whether this board's here or another board's sitting here, it gives them the opportunity that if they were to get notice, one, it gives them the opportunity to take care of what they need to, but two, in my view, more importantly, it gives the public the opportunity to understand that, and maybe be able to come to the meetings and talk to the commissioners about it, because I think they provide a great service. So thank you. Thank you, Helping Hands, for your service.
New business item number two, discuss action on the nomination and confirmation of Rebecca Meredith as executive assistant and county clerk to the Pauline County Board Commissioners. It's a privilege to be able to nominate Ms. Meredith today as our county clerk going forward. It's, it's a great thing that we have somebody with over 14 years of experience, and you know, the toughest part of that experience was the three chairmen and the 11 post commissioners she had to deal with.
It's prominent.
I want to read through some of the qualifications. She currently has these different achievements. Business officer, I'm sorry, business office technology diploma, business computer application certification, associate's of applied technology degree, Georgia certified county clerk certification, international certified municipal clerk certification, master's education management development program certification, various continuing education classes. She was in LPA, Leadership Pauline, class of 26, a member of the Georgia Clerks Association, a member of the International Municipal Clerk Association, a member of the Georgia Records Management Association, and she has served as the interim clerk and executive assistant twice. So I'm deeply grateful to have somebody that qualified right in her office without having to go out and have somebody train. Actually, she took me through the different storage offices where there are minutes that go back into the 19th century, back in the 1800s, so I don't think there's anything I'm just going to go read the minutes back. So that's my nomination, and we'll vote on later, but any of the post commissioners want to chime in?
You took into all those storage lockers. I don't know how you got back here. Thought that was the deal. Daddy knows I'm kidding. But for 20 bucks, I mean, come on. I appreciate your work, all your work, and I appreciate what you and Lonny have done together to roll up your sleeves in a time where we needed that, and you just got the job done, so thank you for your work.
All right, conclusion of the new business, conclusion of all our regular business. We do have an executive session needed for pending of potential litigation, so I need to get a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session for pending of potential litigation?
Motion by Commissioner Pannell, or second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Colette. Callers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May. Motion to choose 5-0, and we'll see you a little while. Any is adjourned? Okay, we'll call the work session back to order. In the executive session, action was taken, resulted in a motion. Your hear motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add to the next meeting, to the 2:00 meeting today. I'd like to make a motion to call a joint meeting with the Pauline County Airport Authority on April 19th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. for the purpose of going into executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation, specifically the corrective action plan as requested by the FAA. We would ask that the Pauline County Airport Authority respond to us, to this request for the joint meeting by Friday, April 14th, at 12:00 noon, for the purpose of advertisement for next week.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Pass is 5-0. Conclusion of the business from the executive session, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pannell, or second by Commissioner? Motion by Commissioner Palanell, or second by Commissioner Davis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.